Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken at this table will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the November 11th, 2019 minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jenny Leeper, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Susie Hines, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to the presentation of accounts payable, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susie Hines, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Sasha Walpert, kind of a tie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on now to item D on the agenda, the adjournment of the retiring board. Do I have a motion to...do I have a motion?
I mean, we adjourn.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
You have to go Joyce.
I do have to go. I will say one thing before we take a vote, that has really been my pleasure to serve on this board for the past 25 years. I just am grateful for working with such an amazing team. You guys always know where to focus, and the focus has always been on the kids. As far as our administrators, we have rock star administrators and a great team, and our staff, all the way from our bus drivers to custodians to food service to our teachers to our pair professionals, they just are amazing, and we couldn't function and operate our educational system without any of those parts. It's like a wheel with all the spokes, and if you had one missing, we would just be limping along. And so, I just am so grateful for all the support for the past 25 years. And with that then, do I...
I would love to make one comment. We had a reception for Joyce a week or so ago, and I think as people spoke, they talked about your leadership, your guidance, certainly your focus on kids, but the thing that kind of rang true for me was how many people talked about your friendship, and how valuable that was, and hard to believe superseded those other components, but it's just the kind of person you are, the heart that you have, and certainly your focus. So, thank you Joyce for everything.
Thank you Andy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.
We will proceed with roll call, if you could please respond when I call your name. Mr. Haseman.
Here.
Dr. Heizerkemp.
Here.
Mrs. Hines.
Here.
Mrs. Leeper.
Here.
Mr. Orvis.
Here.
Mrs. Walpert.
Here.
A quorum has been determined, and the board may now proceed to perfect the permanent organization. Next on the agenda is the official notification of the election results from the county auditor. I have in my possession the certified abstract of votes for the district at large, and there were six individuals running. Votes cast were as follows: Susie Hines, 4,590 votes; Susan Sims, 3,377 votes; Jenny Leeper, 4,657 votes; Nate Gruber, 4,133 votes; Jeff Haseman, 3,916 votes; Erin Cooley, 2,690 votes. There were 218 scatter votes for a total of 23,581 votes. The Board of Supervisors declared Susie Hines, Jenny Leeper, Nate Gruber, and Jeff Haseman duly elected to the office of the Board of Directors for the Cedar Falls Board of Education for a four-year term. If the four can please join me on the floor for the oath of office. If you will please answer with "I will," do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Officer of Director in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations. Okay. We are on agenda, election of the new board president. Well, as a reminder, the Board Policy 201.3 states that the election shall be conducted by first obtaining written nominations. The two members whose names appear most frequently as nominees for an office shall be candidates. The election of the office shall be by written ballot. I've provided each of you at your stations a blue election form. I would ask that you complete the form with signature of the election of the president, and then return to me please. Mr. Jeff Haseman and Mrs. Sasha Walpert. Please proceed to cast one vote for the two candidates placed in nomination. Please use the blue vote ballot as provided. We will now do the oath of office, congratulations. I have too many papers here, forgive me. If you could please stand. Let's see here. If you could answer "I will," do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Board of President in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations, thank you. I'd like to take a seat. We'll now move forward with the election of the Vice President. I've provided at each of your stations a green form. I would ask now that you complete the form with signature for the election of the Vice President, and return to me please. At this time, the following candidate is the one director receiving the most votes, Ms. Sasha Walpert. I would ask that you please cast your vote on the green vote voting ballot provided, and please return to my attention. After reviewing all revotes, Ms. Sasha Walpert is elected as Vice President of the Cedar Falls Board of Education. Please join me up front here for the oath. If you could answer "I will," do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Board Vice President in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is your opportunity to take your seat.
I think I should scoot down.
Thank you.
Look forward to continuing the tradition of a strong board and a great administration, so thank you all to that. I'd like to say that I prepared for everything else, but I didn't, so we'll just wing this with the support of everyone else. So we have an item "I," adopt written policies, rules, regulations, and procedures.
Yes, this is, as you can see there, per Iowa Code 279.8, and it says that we as a board will abide by the rules and laws that we are governed by, and certainly live up to those expectations per Iowa Code.
Does that require a vote?
It does.
All right, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you Dr. Heizerkemp.
Second.
Second by Jenny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, only one item, auction items for December 7th, 2019. Seeing no objection, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item K, is there any public comment?
There is not, no.
All right, very good. Moving on to communications.
Ann Rachel did not have a board report this evening, so, and she had a few important papers to continue to finalize before break, so we have Janelle for the newsletter.
I didn't have the excuse of having a paper due, but you still have to listen to me. We're going to go ahead and look at our communications update real quick. The big news definitely for us, a couple weeks ago, our volleyball team was state champs. Quite an achievement, and over the course of the three matches, it was hard fought, to say the least, at some points, and held a lot of our breaths, but we had a great crowd in Cedar Rapids that made it, and congratulations to the team, and then also to head coach Matt Johnson, he was named our region's Coach of the Year, so congratulations to them. Also just wanted to mention, this is a national ranking, and Cedar Falls came in at ninth in regards to the national rankings for high school volleyball, so that's a pretty amazing accomplishment as well. Cedar Falls High School was named as top STEM high school in America. This was done by Newsweek, and they partnered with stem.org to put together the list, and they looked at STEM experiences, as well as how they're being prepared for post-secondary outcomes, as well as the teachers that are teaching the students and their credentials. So this is actually a list of the top 5,000 high schools in regards to STEM, and Cedar Falls came in at 1,800 or such, but the really exciting thing is we're only one of a very few throughout the state that were named in this as well, so you can see the full list online, but that's a great accomplishment for the high school. Did want to mention Emma Cryer was recognized as four years at Allstate, which is an amazing accomplishment. Allstate was this past weekend, so congratulations to Emma, and then of course our 40-plus students that were involved in the concert on Saturday. This was a really great experience, our CAPS education students went to New Aldia last week, and they actually did virtual reality with the residents there. So they did Google expeditions, they went to the Mayan temples, the Grand Canyon, space, kind of a real variety of experiences. This was great for not only the students, but also the residents, because that was definitely technology none of them had actually experienced before. There was definitely some moments where they, the students were, had to do a lot of kind of problem solving to help them figure through how to make it work for the residents, so I think it was really valuable for them to be able to have a different kind of teaching experience, but it was also really great to see kind of the camaraderie and the enjoyment that they had working together. So Megan Droste and her students went and put that together, so it was, I was actually able to go and observe it, and it was a really neat, really neat to be able to observe those Our technology instructional coaches, they go to U&amp;I every semester to show off all the technology that we utilize across our district and how we use it in regards to instruction. This just shows another time when they went to the College of Education and worked with those students. Here they're showing off Ozobots to those students that'll be going into the field of education in the future, but it's a great partnership that we have with U&amp;I for our instructional coaches to go up there and kind of show what technology we're using in our classrooms. Also wanted to just thank our school's foundation, they've been out presenting checks for their excellence grants across our district. This shows a couple that were given to Aldrich teachers, Mr. Patterson and Mrs. Webb, and then also the teacher librarian, Mrs. Asher, and then there were three that were at Holmes Junior High, received those grants. If you follow them on Facebook, they'll show all of their grants that they've been kind of going across the district, it's kind of like prize patrol, so those teachers don't know they're actually coming in to surprise them, so they're really able to have some great, some great fun with that as they're out in our buildings. Also wanted to mention last week at IASB, as I believe you all were there, and you probably saw this, but wanted to mention it quick, CF CAPS was actually highlighted as one of the Ignite sessions at the annual conference. Ethan Wheatman, the CAPS director, gave a presentation about the program, and then students and instructors were there to answer questions and talk with people that were interested in it. Again, one of those times where you're, I believe, I'm sure all of you were, is very proud to be part of the district, and then the work that they're doing, and it's really amazing to see those students and their interaction with people. We have a sign up out on West 27th Street, I believe Mr. Haseman was the first to break that news. He might have tweeted it even, Facebook, I don't remember. If you go by West 27th Street, past, you and I passed the Cloud Center there, you'll see the sign, it's the location of where the new high school is going to be built, so that's kind of the first thing that we have on the site for people to be able to know actually where that location is. And we again, of course, want to thank the residents of Cedar Falls for making it possible, and we'll continue to have updates at future board meetings as far as the work that's happening. We also have a lot of events actually coming up in December for the district, Hanson Elementary celebrating their 50th year, they're going to have an open house that the public's invited to on Thursday, December 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Students are going to be giving tours, they have lots and lots of artifacts from that building. It's kind of actually interesting, they, I believe they've only had four or five principals at that building over time. Tony Reed was a very long-serving principal that is still in the community, and he's going to be part of it, and is helping us kind of recruit retired teachers that are still in the area to have them come back, and then actually talk to the students in the classrooms about how education and teaching has changed over the course of their careers. So it's kind of a neat thing that'll be happening during the day. They have a time capsule they're going to open that was actually buried when they, well buried, they've had, stashed away, that I think was the 35th anniversary, and then Hanson students are going to create a new time capsule, so that'll be a fun day of celebration for Hanson. And then of course, we have some great celebrations for Orchard Elementary, we're going to have a ribbon cutting and open house there on December 12th, from 5:30 to 7:00. Again, we'll have students giving tours, lots, this is actually the collaborative space, some of the new space at Orchard Elementary, so you'll be able to see all of that, and have some refreshments and see the whole facility. There's lots of parking at Orchard Hill, so don't be afraid if you're worried about getting a location to be able to, in December, to get close, but you'll be able to park there and come in, so we hope to see you on December 12th. And then another way we're trying to do these is to thank the community and have them come in and see this, the amazing facilities. This is actually North Cedar Elementary's gymnasium. If you actually saw their gymnasium prior to this, it was kind of the space of what maybe this boardroom is right here, so you definitely have to come and see this, it's the, we're going to have ribbon cutting with the ambassadors for this one, and an open house on December 17th, 5:30 to 7:00, out at North Cedar Elementary. So we really want to thank the community for making this possible, and then kind of really show off what we've got for our facilities. We also have a STEM open house coming up at the high school on Monday, December 16th. This is really kind of focused on students kind of coming up into high school for them, but really it's open to anybody. It'll be in the project lead the way classrooms, which are on the lower level of the high school, right below the gym, so you can kind of visit with those teachers and then have an idea of possible STEM courses and then extracurricular opportunities. That's where you can find everything else, you can find Jeff Haseman on social media if you go to these social media. Any questions?
Rare.
You're right, it is rare, that's why it pops up super quick when you're on there. Thank you.
Thank you, now, any questions? All right, seeing none, thank you, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple different items. On the agenda, you'll see it says December 11th, the next board meeting is December 9th, so I apologize about that. Couple different things, I'll send out a Google Doc that will give a little synopsis of the board committees, if you could look those over and potentially put your name in areas that you might have interest in, so we can finalize that at the December 9th meeting. Also on December 9th, we'll have an information report with the ISASP results, the new state testing results for the district, and we'll be able to update everybody on those. January 8th is our Board Admin Council Retreat, that starts at 9:30 in the central office, and certainly hope everybody can attend if possible. January 13th then will be the first board meeting in January, there's not a board, a second board meeting in December. We will have a PEPAL update on December 9th as well. We are going to, and have been re-looking at some of the PEPAL planning to make sure that it continuously is kind of that living, breathing document, up to date and current. One of those pieces that we'll bring to the board on December 9th is going to be North Cedar Playground, and some of those components with the groundwater out there to help overcome some of the challenges that are there. And then just a reminder with the revenue purpose statement, coming up at that December 9th meeting, we'll start to finalize the language for that revenue purpose statement, so we can utilize the once-in-sales tax that the legislature approved for us to utilize, and set the parameters on what we can utilize it for, but we have to have the public vote that says we can use the money that the legislature appropriated to us, and said how we can spend the money. We're looking at March 3rd for that vote, and believe that will be the same time where the city has a special election as well, to fill the seat that will be vacated by the newly-elected mayor. So, should be about the same time as that, same date, so we know that that will be something as well to look forward to on December 9th.
All right, thank you Dr. Petit, any questions?
Did I, did I see Director Hines had given us a document for signing up for opportunities for PLC visits, that sort of thing, did you do that, or did?
I think that would come from Dr. Petit, I just collect the dates.
Yeah, so there will be another Google Doc that will be sent out actually too, for PTO, PTA dates, and those have been finalized, as well as PLC and building visits, and we ask that each board member sign up, hopefully for two to three different building visits or PLC visits, as well as the PTO, PTA visits, where we go out and meet with the different PTAs. It's really a good opportunity to talk about goals, some of the things that we're working on as a district, and kind of more of a question and answer session.
Some of us have found that document and started filling it in.
I saw that.
Yes.
There's like seven years of them floating out there, so I...
Watch what you sign up on.
I will send out the correct one to everybody here in the next 24 to 36 hours.
Sounds good, wonderful, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, our next agenda item is, we established a tradition as a board a few years ago of doing a, sort of a debrief from the IASB, the Iowa Association of School Boards. For those who are not familiar, the school board goes to Des Moines for a two-day conference every year, and it's all the school boards from across the state are there, and they have educational session, they have speakers who are experts in the area of education, and it's a good opportunity for our school board as well to interact with other school board members, as well as experts in the educational field. So, kind of our tradition has been that once we get back from that, just to sort of do a little bit of debrief about, you know, what impacted you the most as far as key learnings, if there's things that, as we're looking, as our responsibility for our Cedar Falls School District, if there's things that inspire us, or we think, well, maybe we should study those more, or just a reflection. So, just kind of an open discussion time for all of the, all the directors as we, if there were things that impacted you, so I just open it up for anybody, and we'll allow this to just be an open discussion.
One session I did attend was put on by the North Scott Superintendent and a school board director. They had an incident there about a year ago of a student with a handgun, and they quickly and effectively resolved that situation, but they analyzed what they did in response, especially in those, that first couple of hours, and some of those other things that you might not think of until you're in that situation. I do think it'd be worthwhile to maybe reach out, contact North Scott, and ask them a few more details about this. I think they had some really good insights about, for instance, they were very good about locking down all of their buildings, but at the time, the superintendent was very preoccupied with the situation in the immediate building, and the communication they felt might have broken down a little bit with the other buildings, they remained in lockdown, really didn't have to, some of those sorts of things. So I thought their insights might be very helpful to us, so we're better prepared in case of any sort of situation, any way remotely similar to that.
Agreed, and it's something that's so important to stay in age, just understanding the safety plans and the processes. We actually just went through a safety training with some tabletop exercises Friday morning with our admin office, on what do you do if and response to, and we do that in each of our buildings each year as well. So it's important to keep pace and on top of those things, and we'll certainly reach out to North Scott to get more information about that. I remember that situation, and it's scary, always scary if something like that happens, so.
Thank you. Other comments, observations?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate attending a couple of school finance, school finance sessions, one of which was facilitated by our own Danell Gonnerman. Thank you. It was awesome. Yeah, I was thinking about, I was asking Sasha before we, the meeting started, I, what was the takeaway from the session? And I was, as I drove back home from Des Moines that afternoon after the conference, I was reminded of the, I think a common theme throughout several different presenters was both the art and the science, if you will, of teaching and instruction and how important it is for us to be mindful of how good teaching and learning takes place. It, it has to do with creativity, it also has to do with really good instruction and a culture and a climate that's conducive to learning. And if we can do, you know, all those things simultaneously, we're really, as, as Joyce leads every board meeting by saying what's, was spoken here will be for the benefit of our students' academic, and I would say also our students' academic and emotional and social well-being as well. But yeah, just the art and the science of teaching not to be forgotten. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like to concur, Danell, you did a great job at the finance, School Finance one oh one. Very informative. It kind of felt like I was sitting in a board meeting with you giving the numbers for the school district and so, congratulations and good job. For me, one of the things that stuck out particularly with the keynotes, Sir Ken Robinson and Principal Hamish Brewer, was the emphasis on supporting teachers and the work that they do in, within the district. So, and there are a lot of things I, you know, hope we can do as a board to continue doing that here. You know, I have no doubt that we already do, but I would like to, you know, look at ways that we can do that even more so. One of the things that I attended, instead of the session that had the CF, Cedar Falls CAPS, I went over to the, the capstone about the student mental health. And the presenter is Jennifer Uli Wells, she's the founder of an organization called Please Pass the Love and a West Des Moines School Board member herself. And I think there was, there was a resource that she handed out to the conferences, fourteen ways for school boards to improve school mental health. I will send that link out to Janelle so she can send it out to the board as well. And I think, you know, there's a number of things that we can do particularly within just school policy that I think can help support and as we continue to work towards improving mental health access for our students as a district, so.
You know, as, mental health is going to be one of the main priorities for the school board, Iowa Association of School Boards to lobby for as we move into this next legislative session, on making sure that we're getting the resources to be able to deal with the mental health issues in our schools. Maybe this would be a good opportunity for us to do a board read of something like this. We've talked about doing, maybe not entire books, but articles or things that are relevant to what we're working on. So maybe that will be a, a good document that we could take a look at as a board. And I just wanted to, to kind of build on the idea of supporting teachers and, you know, the kinds of work that we're already doing in our district. One of the things that seemed to be echoed throughout the whole conference was the importance of innovation and the need to be able to prepare our students for future careers that we can't even imagine right now, you know? And some of that has to do with the environment that they're in, and I think we're doing a really amazing job in this district of creating facilities as we redesign facilities and think about our new high school, creating facilities that are going to enhance the ability of teachers to work with students in really innovative ways. And those ways will encourage creativity and collaboration. So I, I just, I felt really good about what we're doing in this district, hearing some of these presentations.
I would say two things that stuck out to me. I did, I was able to attend our CAPS presentation at the end of the day. If anything, I was disappointed in IASB and not moving that up to the begin, to the day. That, probably my biggest struggle with going to IASB is because I feel so much of it is either aimed at very, very large districts who have a very different socioeconomic than we do, or very, very small districts, and we sometimes are either not finding a lot of value out of some of the sessions, or we are doing very progressive things that we should be leading some of the sessions. And I thought that end of the day session where we had magnet schools represented, we had rural communities working with kind of CAPS-like programs and then our CAPS model itself. So if anything, IASB, if you're listening, that should be something that is offered because there was something for every single school district that would have been there that day at the end of that session. So again, our students fantastic representatives for, and I should call them our associates because that's what they are in CAPS, but fantastic representatives for us. And the other thing that stood out to me, I always do appreciate having the keynote speakers because I do think we leave very invigorated about the passion that they have for learning and kind of the innovation, the excitement that we can, looking at different learning models. The flip side of that is I then get somewhat discouraged because we are still bound by post-secondary gatekeepers like ACT scores and GPA when, when you're talking about college admissions and college financial aid. So I hope that there's an opportunity for those speakers to be talking to people outside of school districts, because if things can't change at the post-secondary level, it makes it very hard for us to stand behind programs like CAPS and standards-based grading, which we know is the benefit to our students. We know that's really where we're measuring the right measures, we're working towards the right masteries with our students. More and more colleges are beginning to drop test scores, so I think that's a key that we should be able to hold out to parents, that every day there's a college that is starting to look at standardized testing and maybe not looking at ACT scores or SAT scores, and they are starting to look at the whole student. So I hope that's something where we can reassure our parents that we are doing the right work and being able to measure our students' mastery of content and then them being able to tell a great narrative about what they've learned and how to apply that learning, rather than just talk about a test score, is something that I think we are doing the right thing here in Cedar Falls and hopefully we continue to work with our legislators and the Board of Education to impress that upon others within our world, so.
One more thing, I would like to have us just at least occasionally examine the cost-benefit analysis of whether or not the time commitment, money commitment we put toward this meeting is worthwhile. I'm not saying it is or isn't, but I do think it's worth examining.
A work session would be great.
I can finish this up with Jenny's whole student. So I sat through two programs, one about our unified associations, and that would be Boys Athletic Association, Girls Athletic Association, the Music Association, as well as Speech. And the four of those, I didn't even know we had all of those, but the two sets, there's really two sets of offices with Boys Athletic and, I may get this wrong, but Speech, let's say, and then Music and Girls Athletics. And they have a unified calendar that they're working on for next year with a down week in July, which still is being worked through, so that the students have an entire week of no sports, no festivals, no camps, which was very interesting to me. And then the other item that I went to, which really gives a shout-out to our Communications Director, Janelle Darst, was regarding social media, all the pros, the cons of social media. You know, some of us are, you know, like Jeff, posting all the time. That sign, and some of us, you know, just dabble in it a little bit, but, you know, it was just some, some great reminders and a little, little different, but again, speakers, very, very, very intriguing.
Well, I, you know, I, one of the comments I think I learned was DOK? Am I saying that right? You had DOK three and four is what we're, depths of knowledge?
Depth of knowledge.
Depth of knowledge. And, you know, as we, as we've thought about, I, I mean, I think that's, well, that is the impetus behind us doing, trying to do standards-based grading and implementing that, is we want them to, and, and for those, I will do my best and there are others of you can correct me if my understanding is wrong about this, but what we're really looking for is we give, we, we don't want our students just to repeat what we've taught them. We want them to be able to process the information and do critical, through critical thinking and creativity and innovation, come up with solutions. And so then, of course, my mind went, well, how do you measure that? You know, how, how do you know that we've been successful at doing that? And obviously in our world, that becomes, that becomes a challenge, is really our, our success is if we're, if we can go and, and survey five to ten years down the road and our students are successful, members of our society are, are being successful in, in the vocation that they've chosen, that's, that's really where the success is, but doesn't mean that we don't keep achieving and trying to get to DOK three and four. So that was, that was my key takeaway. Anything else from anybody else?
Well, just to follow up on that, are we moving towards being able to do that kind of measure? I was just, I had had an article that I had pulled and I just shared it with my student associates today that was talking about grades versus being a predictor of career success, and there's not a huge correlation there. In fact, the three people, I can't, the one was Martin Luther King, Steve Jobs, and I can't remember the third one, but were noting what their grades were and they were not four-point-oh students by any means. So I think when we talk about that, I know those are important measures for districts and for parents, but how can we start to do a measure of what real success looks like past the calls of Cedar Falls High School?
Well, and you, you build that out with those essential skills. The, the expectations, really, pre-K through twelve in our case, pre-K through twenty, as we look through, you know, college and career readiness, to make sure that we have those, you know, we call them the four Cs, you can call them the, the application skills of critical thinking and looking at different problems in unique ways and, and making sure we have collaboration amongst students to be able to, be able to communicate effectively and that you are creative in, in your thinking, because we know there's so many dynamics and, and the world is changing and our kids need to get ready for jobs that we don't even know are solving problems that are going to be in the future. So we, we are trying to create the, in what we call the four Cs, those, those skills, and then have students apply those and, and show how do they make sure that instead of just being rote memorizers of content, dates and facts, that they can actually apply those in those real world, world settings. You know, our, our hope is that every student has a CAPS-like experience when they graduate from our school system, because again, it's, it's taking those different projects from an idea to actual implementation that's value-added, that certainly enhance all those skillsets and, and opportunities in a application of essential learning.
So with our foundation though, again, do we have a way that we are surveying students, that we are getting those contacts so that we can stay in contact with them once they've left?
Gotcha, I might have answered a different question.
I'm sorry. No, that was a great, that was still great. No, that was perfect, but.
Yes, that's actually one of the goals that we talked about with the, the board, that we are working with our foundation to be able to interview our students one year out so we can get a better understanding of what they're doing and what they feel preparation was into their either career and/or college, their next steps. But then more importantly, I think, is that five-year. You always hope that you can get a pretty good response with a five-year removing because that will, or removal from high school, because I think that's going to be a more realistic viewpoint and, and reflection by our former students as they look at where they're at now in their life as twenty-two, twenty-three-year-olds and, and whether or not we prepared them efficiently and effectively for those next steps. So hopefully we will be able to get that data. We know that once you initially survey students, the first year, sometimes it's a little bit challenging as you get that word out, but each year, we hope, our foundation as we work with them and they partner with us, as students go through their graduation breakfast and preparation for their graduation day, we can let them know that they are going to be asked for feedback to help us make important decisions as we look into the future.
Just a, a final note on the assessment piece, I think more immediately for the students who are in the classroom right now, thinking about assessment differently than what we've traditionally thought of as going to be imperative. Like it's not going to be just paper pencil testing, it's going to be observing students as they work collaboratively, collaboratively in groups, you know, watching them as they do presentations, like the CAPS students, allowing them to get feedback. I just got a nice note from one of the CAPS groups, I went to one of their pitch sessions and provided some feedback. And, you know, that kind of thing helps them to grow as, as learners in ways that a paper and pencil typical test is not going to evaluate. So assessment, it's just not going to look the same way in the future, I think, and it might be harder to figure out how to quantify precisely.
I think that's, and it's one of the challenges as we all face as educators and, and, you know, it's such a more challenging and depth job than I think it ever was in the past if you look at education in general and, because again, the assessments have changed, the, the attention has changed on some of those outcomes and, and essential learnings for what we expect for students. And Pam can answer this question much better than I could, but it's really when we go into elementaries and we look at our, our workshop model and the dialogue that students have with one another, the questioning that they ask, the in-depth reflection that they are really trying to dig deeper into the content with one another, let alone between them and their teachers, really those records that you keep track of to be able to, to, to say, do students understand this at a deep level? Can they really reflect on it and ask inquisitive questions to build upon that critical thinking capacity even at the kindergarten, first grade level? It's, it's truly changing a, a lot of what maybe we had or experienced when we went through school.
And I think it's an opportunity for our students to realize this is a chance for them to be a peer to their instructors. You know, if they don't understand something, if they don't understand the grading methodology, it's a student's responsibility, especially high school students who are going to be out in the college world and the real world within two to three years, go talk to your teachers and try and get that understanding on your own. I think that's something that our, our high school students should see as an opportunity to really be involved in their process and take some ownership and be proactive about it, so.
Great discussion. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Is there any other comments? I guess I would just reiterate that we have several for our community. We have December fifth, we have the Hanson Celebration of fifty years, the twelfth, we have the open house at Orchard Hill, and the twelfth, we have the open house at North Cedar.
Seventeenth.
Or seventeen, sorry, seventeenth. So I would invite our community to see the investment that they've made in our educational system and, and meet the, the staff and teachers that are in those buildings and, and celebrate with us. A great, and as we look forward to our new high school, the sign of which is, is now up, we can look forward to that as well. So any other comments from board members? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved from Jenny Leeper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Suzie Hines. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, we are adjourned.